Good evening. Welcome to Glen's Falls Plainfield. The business is approved for minutes from last meeting. Anyone have any comments? I don't. Is this a lady?
No.
Make the motion to approve the minutes. That's all. All favor. First order of business. We're open to put the floor for public comment. Please come forward on a time, state your name and address. And please remember, there's a three-minute timeframe for public comment. I'll ask you to address the whole thing, or it's approved. Not to single out any one or separate of your comments. I would also like to remind you that this is not a dialogue or a conversation. It's simply public comment. First order of business this evening. Old business is site plan. USB 25-0009, 196th Street, Glen's Falls LLC. Order of Tax Map Number 302.16-16-1. Commonly known as 196th Ridge Street. Represented by Ethan Hall and Wazinski Hall Architecture. And seeking site plan, we're going to convert the existing building from a two-unit parking building into a six-unit parking building, as well as construct six future townhouse units consisting of three-bedroom units pursuant to the city of Glen's Falls only go chapter 220-14, D1 and D2. This required site plan to be approved. Also, at the same time, a new architectural review. AR 25-4196, Glen's Falls LLC. Order of Tax Map Number 302.16-16-1. Commonly known as 196th Ridge Street. Represented by Ethan Hall and Wazinski Hall Architecture. Seeking architecture review of the existing building from a two-unit parking building to a six-unit parking building, as well as construct six future townhouse units consisting of three-bedroom units pursuant to the city of Glen's Falls only go chapter 220-14, D1 and D2. This required architectural review and approval. And you are?
Good evening. For your records, my name is Ethan Hall, and principal of Wazinski Hall Architecture. With me tonight is Dan Schneider, member of 196th Ridge Street. I'll say, this is continuation of the sketch plan review that we did earlier in the year. Tim did have a few comments. We addressed most of the comments from the board on the plans we have in front of you. We met with Martin Seaton from A1 Tree Works, who's a certified arborist. We walked the block. The growing in your seat up here right now indicates the trees that need, as identified as either the need of removal or ones that are in bad shape. The other ones that we have in the trip line of the explanation will be in the parking areas themselves. So we've got that shown as what needs to be approved. The updated site plan shows the planning plan with plenty of stuff to go back to. Take care of the ones that are being removed. We addressed the aisle rear roof fire marshal as far as the driveway down the hill. A couple of other things that we did. One of the members who talked about the parking that we had on the Ridge Street side of the building, we moved those to the back of the building. We did leave the accessible parking space up front, these are the accessible entrances to the building. And the other thing that we did was along the west side of the building where the setback is 10 feet, we moved the building back 21 feet and eliminated the patio as their own factor. I think that's the extended back portion of it. The rest of it pretty much stays the same as what we presented before. We did brick facades to match to the existing building. And brick facade on the front of the proposed townhouses to the outside of the existing as far as fencing goes. Couple of things that we wanted to take care of. The actual actual move plan. As you come up to the end of Williams Street, this corner right here coming up to the stop bar, Williams is a long way street. And the stop bar is set back a little bit. With the way with the shrubbery has grown up in that corner, you actually have to move beyond the stop bar to see how it works. So part of our plan is to take all that shrubbery out and replace it with low surface. And along the near paradise fence, that three-foot high fence, it's all the way up. Both provision, looking at. The inefficient choose the fencing is already clear, but it starts at this walkway, comes down, which you turn the corners and it comes down to this walkway. We're going to pick that up and extend that down to a new driveway, and then on the other side of the driveway after the walkway. Pick up from that side of the walkway up to our entry drive, pick up on the other side and bring that up to the walkway and turn it back to where the new fence is. The rest of the property, there is a issue that the neighbor on this side currently has a very nice, about five-six-foot-high fence that actually has a top lip to keep the basketball from going over. We're going to pick up from the end of that, on this end of it, and go along the property line and use this for high fence. We'll also pick up on this end and bring the rest of the property back to Williams Street. This is the fence color that they've chosen. They chose the dark brown, this kind of matches the base of the trees that were there. Let into that, we'll stick out like a light fence will. Cadaver, detail of the fence was added to the property. Looks like a six-foot tall solid. Think that pretty much encompasses what we talked about. We did take away a lot of the parking that was back here. We had that in, we had it shown as tenant parking for future, if it's determined that we needed. We do need all the criteria for parking. We need the criteria for density, we need the criteria for all our stuff. And lockup. With that, open up the board for the rest.
Ethan, I think that's the board's permission plan, which is to count that, but it's things that were not necessarily expected to be.
Yeah, we have it shown on there. That may be not provided unless it was deemed necessary. We met the zoning requirement and the comments that we got when we were there last time is that we provided more parking than what was necessary, which normally would come in and ask for variance for that, but we actually invited more. I don't think it would be necessary. Most of the apartments that are in this building are one-bedroom apartments, and I think we've got plenty of parking in the townhouse back here, each one has a garage, plus there's basically two parking spaces in front of each unit.
So the bank parking, future building, will it be sold for its own?
Correct. There wouldn't be available unless it became necessary. And even with the bank parking, we still need all the criteria for. Does that?
You know, more, right?
Yes.
It's not.
No, no. It wouldn't be paid unless they determine that they.
Remind us what the color of the siding, which will turn the corner, we've got the brick facades and the siding, and I'm just comparing the house.
Yeah, so we talked about going with something that is going to kind of match the mortar, but not the brick. We found an issue with this brick trying to go siding and then match it, but if we go with like a gray siding, it matched the mortar, and that's kind of the problem.
It's a red.
The brick doesn't match, does it?
So it'll contrast. I couldn't find anything that sort of like, you know, the weight is.
There would be a red.
My own thoughts that it's a little, you know, from that.
Yes, it's, yeah, well, the issue that I had with going with something like that is it's kind of a start, and if I can do something that I can kind of make the, you know, not appear as start. We can look and try and, you know, look at it and try and find a red to match.
And I guess that would also be my thought on the other apartment.
Yes.
Face color, see it on an angle, color, including the color. So just. And then, I like that the Ridge Street parking is moved to the back of the house. I like that the dumpster is in the long room, and we were talking about. I think that the ground with the fence is preferable to it. And then I had a question about confirming whether it went all the way around when you explained what it did. And also that you've got the little fence running along the.
Ridge.
Williams Street, yeah. And it's like you're filling in landscaping as much as possible. I absolutely think that it's positive that the number of spaces has been reduced. I mean, you can't know now, but is there something in particular that might trigger building that out in the future if you just need spaces?
Only if there was, you know, if there were people having trouble parking.
But you've got.
We don't anticipate.
Correct. So.
We provided two-per apartments, and like I said, some of them are one-bedroom apartments where the odds of having two cars or something.
And then regarding the new building, I think it's probably, you have a little dog patty.
Correct.
And I think that's positive, you know, something that potentially could have. I appreciate the awareness for that. And again, my thought on the side, and I guess I'm trying to picture the grid, but maybe there's something on it. Where will all the electric meters be mounted?
Likely on the backside of the building.
Which building? Well, we've got two buildings.
We have two buildings. So the existing building, which is going to be done first, the existing two units, they're going to become four, and then the garage comes off and two addition. All of those meters would be on the backside of that building, and facing the townhouse.
Okay. Not facing Williams Street and not facing.
This is Dan's area.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, but, but somewhere in here, not facing, not on the.
Not on the street side, not on the street side. They're on the backside of the building. And that gets access. Remember, ones with the townhouse, there's actually on the end of the building right here, right there, there's a pump out that is the water room here, also. Yeah, on the, excuse me. This end of the building right here has the water room, so the sprinkler rise comes off, also. And the electric meters on this building are back, on the backside of the building.
And did you discuss the, oh, you're not doing external exterior pumps, are you?
As far as many splits, yeah, the idea is to be, those units are going to be drowned out, and units will be placed back here, and then for these units, these are going to be all electric. Ground running units will be at that end of the building on the far end.
So they're all ground running, not hanging on, off the wall?
No, we just have to. We'd probably get those guys so that they can handle a couple of apartments further. Correct. The ones with the nuclear unit, they're on the backside.
I guess one thought is, looking at your elevations. It seems. Appreciate the brick on this side, and the sound of the brick on both sides, and then I understand also just from an eye contact, you're transitioning to the side of the. Final? I wonder if there isn't an opportunity, maybe something, perhaps on this facility in there to, if, rock and a better word.
Yeah, what we tried to do here is to match the, to match the front facade that's facing Ridge Street. We brought all the gingerbread over, they were bad.
Yes.
The organization of the windows and those types of things.
In keeping with a very distinct house.
When you're driving down the street, it's all houses there. So at the end of that building, it looked like a house.
Yeah, really, I agree. What you did with the requiring calls, they look more like porch.
Maybe not.
Clear open for comment. Anyone that has a comment for a three-minute. Who upstate their name, your address?
Hi there. My name is David Cook, and my wife Christine and I live on 202 Ridge Street. Our neighborhood's created a logo that you may have noticed with the chags pins that some of us are wearing. It's an acronym that identifies what we want to preserve here in Glen's Falls. Character, history, and green space. Although we understand that the developers wanting to do more with the 196th Ridge Street property, we do not support those plans and believe that sometimes less is more. As far as character, that's something that attracted us to move here less than a year ago. We do not want to see that attractive feature lost by overdeveloping our green spaces. December last year, Mark Frost from The Chronicle said, quote, "Look magazine in 1944 spotlighted Glen's Falls, telling our story, catching a character of what it titled 'Hometown USA,' as Look magazine looked to inspire the nation during World War II." As far as history, everyone in this room knows that Glen's Falls is full of history. Whether those in our neighborhood have lived here less than one year like us, or over 40 years, we all wish to preserve that history. And the history of the Adirondack balloon festival, over 50 years ago, was started in part by Walter and Joan Griscott. We never met them, but we are honored to live in their former house on Ridge Street. The people who lived near the Griscotts when they were living can confirm that they were adamant in preserving the character, history, and green space of our neighborhood. And were they still alive today, I'm sure they'd be here at the head of our chags group. Green space is also a huge, appealing, and necessary feature of our block. Most of the adjacent properties to the 196th Ridge Street property have homes that reflect that appeal. 50 William Street, Brittany's House formerly owned by, for 50 years by Dr. Tedesco, has many glass windows. Jeff and Rachel on number 1, 200 Ridge Street have the back of their house designed to accentuate the property and the privacy. Our house, the rear annex, designed and built by the Griscotts, with a solarium and a sunroom to capitalize on the green space, the privacy. And Barbara and Carrie next door have their pool backing up to that green space. A few other concerns that we have are traffic with the residents, as well as extra vehicular traffic like Amazon delivery, things like that. And then we have some concerns with the integrity of the short environmental assessment form. There is a couple questions that were answered there. One was, will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? The answer was given no. And I think with 29 parking spaces or that many units, it would definitely be a substantial increase. And so we would wonder if there's a need for a traffic study to see what the impact would be. Another, number 20, question number 20 said. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Mason. I'm a registered nurse at Glen's Falls Hospital. Three years ago, I bought my home at 50 William Street, which is directly next door to 196th Ridge. I bought this home not only to be close to work, but because of the elegant charm of the historic property, the great neighborhood, and kind neighbors. Snyder's Drywall, the new owners of 196th Ridge, want to change the historic Victorian house next door to my home into six two-bedroom apartments, and in a separate and second building, add six three-bedroom townhomes, for a total of 12 units plus 29 parking spaces. With this proposed plan, my home will literally be surrounded on the east side and all along my backyard. This greatly impacts me, my stepchildren, my dog. I don't believe that this lot, which sits partially along a one-way street, is able to safely accommodate this occupancy level at a greater density. As a stepmom, safety is the most important issue for me, and to learn that William Street transitioned years ago to a one-way street after a young neighborhood child was hit by a car because of excessive traffic reminds me that life on William Street will never be the same if this project moves forward. It's evident Snyder's Drywall is not concerned for the safety of the kids of my street, as just on Monday this week, they drove two of their company trucks down the wrong way onto William Street and parked both trucks the wrong way facing west, witnessed by multiple neighbors. There are numerous issues of concern for me as the owner next door, and since many of my neighbors are planning to come forward tonight, I will focus my comments on one of the most serious issues that will negatively impact my home, which is the creation of an access road. The proposed change to the existing driveway, which is currently only accessible to Ridge, and to extend through the newly proposed parking lot with added entry and exit onto William Street will function more like an access road rather than a driveway. The access road will not only serve the residents, it will become a critical pathway for emergency vehicles, visitors, service vehicles, including delivery trucks. The 12 rental units included at least six, to be included at least six units with three bedrooms will result in approximately 40 to 45 individuals residing on this property. Given that the occupancy level at 196th Ridge has traditionally only been two to four individuals, this proposed expansion is significant and will greatly increase traffic and demand for parking. I believe this added residential density will exacerbate congestion, reduce pedestrian safety, and create problems among neighbors who need a new street parking, which will become much less available. Given the issues related to the creation of the access road and the development plan calls for 29 parking spaces and will likely generate 100 or more new trips in the peak hours, I request that the planning board and/or the city of Glen's Falls arrange for a traffic impact study. Such a study will allow professionals to evaluate and document the impact of the project on traffic congestion, intersection circulation, and flow, and public safety. The study should also identify mitigating measures to minimize those impacts. I recommend the study also includes traffic counts to measure the volume of vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians during peak hours. And then also review of traffic patterns and speeds, including on and off William, which is one-way, Lawton Avenue, which is a dead end, and onto Dixon Ridge, which are typically high-traffic areas. The studies should also forecast future traffic volume, given the size of the proposed development and the number of parking spaces. Given the large parking area proposed by the project, the study should also include a driveway analysis, including the effect of drainage on adjacent properties, and the street pavements, and the potential of ponding for water and snow on the shoulders. In addition to having professionals prepare the traffic impact study, I recommend that the city of Glen's Falls consult with staff. At New York State Department of Transportation, Ridge Street is also known as St. Room 9O. And moving north, it becomes Ridge Road and connects the city of Glen's Falls to the towns of Queensberry and Lake George into the Adirondack Park. While Ridge Street is not a state highway, a New York DOT review may not be required, their expertise would be most helpful, given that the development calls for the construction of an access road onto the property. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Jeffrey Valk. I live at 200 Ridge. My property borders on two sides, both the. The post building. I'm here with my wife Rachel, her team, and our two children. And like Dave, we've only been at that house for two years now. We came for the character and the charm and the scenery that that area brings. I bought it because it's a nice, safe, enclosed space, not because of there's going to be a six-suite, 18-month building in my backyard that I just stare at. Some of the terms that, in addition to the safety concerns, pollution, water, and obviously the environmental impact that this may have on the area. As you know, this is part of the, it's a double-a watershed area, so they have water, everything has to be filtered through, filtration through the water. The soil has to be studied and made sure that the construction and the building can handle that, the environment can handle that. So I just want to make sure that's in consideration. Again, beyond the safety, we moved here for the character and the charm, and for what is in this presented building, the proposed plan is not in the character and charm of Glen's Falls. Thank you.
Good evening. Chairman members of the city of Glen's Falls. I'm here. I am Tricia Tagg. I reside at a lot on Lawton Avenue. I am within five feet of the proposed project on Ridge Street. I have lived on Lawton Avenue for 37 years, and I am the retired director of Henry New Development for Warren County. I worked for the county for 45 years. My particular interests are rural development, for the housing, Main Street projects, and farmers' markets. And as I stand in this building today, I'm pretty proud because I was a member of the DRI, and I was a founding member of Glen's Falls Farmers Market, so just a little bit about me. So today I want to talk about the. legislation that allows cities to use this tool in their zoning ordinances. And it was meant to be a flexible tool for the planning boards so that they could look at projects like this and other ones and make determinations on impacts that may occur as a result of an expansion of uses that were allowed by the right within the zoning districts. And I think it was a pretty important tool that they gave to the planning boards. These, the site plan review process, as you know, is meant to look at the issues related to mitigating factors, overdevelopment, traffic, planning noise, and artificial light intrusions. Additionally, it was meant to be that this body will look to see that the project was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and architectural compatibility with the other buildings within the adjoining neighborhood. Also, the adequacy of public facilities and services, including emergency services, and ultimately to protect the harmony of historic properties and the surrounding neighborhood. And so your challenge, I guess, is to make sure that this project does not create an undue burden on adjoining property owners in the existing neighborhoods. The expansion of this project with the twelve units, the twenty-nine parking spaces, and the potential of forty-nine room residents is not only developing the building, but it's everything that comes with new residents coming into the area, additional cars, activity... Thank you very much.
I'm Steve Tibbert. I live at one ninety-one Ridge Street, which is a key corner to this neighborhood, quarter of William and Ridge there. I've got a few concerns I'd like to mention and a question I'd like to ask. The, Glens Falls is a once-in-a-generation opportunity now. Business is opening downtown, and people wanting to move here, and developers wanting to develop, and most of that's a good thing, but we have to be sure we get it right. I'm not a, I'm a chain of key planners, I'm a longtime resident, family of here in nineteen seventy-one. The, what I certainly feel, and what everyone I talk to, just feels like the growth of bullet blocks in Glens Falls, it's out of control. They're, they suddenly act as a street scape, probably in the neighborhood, and there's just too many, and they're coming on too fast. And the other, my other concern is about traffic. This, well, it will put cars onto Ridge Street and Dix Avenue is right there, and both of those streets are really deteriorating traffic-wise, and are traffic hotspots, at least in Blightwood. And the other concern is with absentee landlords. On that corner, we have four grand old properties with ornate features, and two of them especially are way oversized for today's single families. But the two with absentee landlords are rundown, there's frequently broken-down furniture put on the curb, there's police often called in places. And Ridge Street is kind of, in my mind, is a unique moment in its development. There's some wonderful residents who are resident here tonight, and then there's some of these mostly absentee landlord properties, which are the growth enough to do, rather than large or chicken companies reporting this. And those are the ones that are dragging the neighborhood down. And I think with the sort of growth potential of Glens Falls right now, it's a chance to lift Ridge Street, not make it another place with absentee landlords and another part of the complex. So I think that, looking to my question, in this time when we've got a, I'm not quite sure what the term is, a new master plan, I think, in works, which implies to me that the current master plan is pretty old, and I'm sure that zoning and master plans are never comprehensive or perfect. There's always little interpretations in each day, like the previous speaker was referring to. And so during this time, who's looking after the character and the valuable assets, which in my mind is these grand old houses with interesting features? Who's looking after the character of Glens Falls that makes it a charming place to live? And gives it its character? I assume it's most of you guys, but I'll just wrap it up. And so I hope we can hook and get back to this, yeah?
Hello, I'm John Peck, resident of twelve William Street since nineteen eighty-eight. I've been walking and going down the street a lot, and this house has been abandoned for many, many years. It's archi, uh, ar- arctic, uh, architec, I can't hear.
Architect.
Yeah. The brick building, it's an old building, it fits into the character, and I'm just glad to see someone come in and use it. Now, I may be bucking the tide here, but I'm also a certified, was a certified professional in erosion center control. And I looked at that site plan review in their detail, their erosion center control plan is good. They have fencing, attractive fencing, six-to-a-high, their plantings are good. I've seen a lot of good things about here, but the one thing that I see missing is where's the sewage going to go Thursday?
City sewer.
Yeah, city sewer. But the... The previous are in front of the sewer line, and the cleanout is straight out here. And I don't see here any actual detail where the sewer line is going to be now, and when you go in and construct, are you going to start digging for a foundation, plus the store line? So there is something missing, but I also was involved with changing William Street to a one-way street. And I took an informal survey after that child that was mentioned was put in a wheelchair for the rest of her life, and many other times, because it's the shortest, shortest way from going from Dix to Bay. We had ninety-three cars in half an hour. Now, since it's been one-way, it's reduced a lot. I think twenty-nine parking spaces for forty-three could... Do you reduce the number of parking spaces? That's... Well, that was a good thing, because that was one of my concerns. Why do you need twenty-nine spaces for eighteen units or whatever it is? So...
I'm sorry, I can't...
Okay.
Hello. Hi. My name's Sarah Schultz, and me and my husband, Michael Moser, live at seven Vanderheiden Street. Our backyard backs up to the large yard at one ninety-six Ridge, and we've got a lot of concerns that we share with our neighbors. The addition of the six townhomes would be a dramatic shift in the population of the parcel. The property last had four people living there, and with this proposal, we could see twenty-eight to fifty-six percent, or twenty-eight to fifty-six of people residing there. The proposal leads to an overcrowding of the land, which will put a strain on the current construction. So given the...
Sure.
So given the projected size of the dwelling units, parking, estimated occupancy levels, you know, really like the city to take a close look at the impact of all the city's services, police, fire, water, sewer, yard waste, and snow. And then given the existing character of this part of the city, which presents an undue concentration of population, you know, we're a low-density neighborhood, mostly duplexes and single-family homes, so if this project's approved, it would greatly change the aesthetic and the ambience of our neighborhood. And then aside from the overcrowding of the area, we have concerns about the increase in light and noise pollution. There's also the issue of our impervious surfaces, like parking lot and access road, being added over the green space, and worried that there's a little runoff and flooding issues. And then, you know, shared the concerns of the increase in traffic in the area. So...
Good evening. My name is George Goodman, George Wade Goodman. I live in Baltimore, and I thought I'd give you a little bit of historical perspective. My grandparents met Sarah Cawthon Wade Goodman and Scott McMonville Goodman as neighbors on Ridge Street. They got married, and they lived in the house, which was then one twenty-seven Ridge. It's across from Quaker Church. And if you look at how kind of Glens Falls was laid out, it was laid out so that houses had enough space for their home, and I was kind of doing photographs, but the listener bumped it forward today, so another time I'd like to show you some photographs of my grandfather in the eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties. But, what else I'm going to say? My father was born in that house in eighteen ninety-six, and the way Queensbury or Glens Falls was laid out seemed like it was, you had enough homes, enough space in your home or your property for your home, for your horse and carriage and stuff like that. And it was desolate, and it seems like now it's gone into much more congestion. I love the beauty of the neighborhoods, and it seems like this is a challenging one because it's going from single residences to as much as you can get. And it seems like this project is out of character. I also have heard that you're putting a comprehensive master plan together. Seems like historical perspectives of properties should be appreciated. I think this is way too much volume for the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Trushant, and my wife, we live at twelve Vanderheiden Street. We're thirty-two-year residents of the neighborhood, and we reside within the five hundredth impact zone. Our house, our home is across the street from the properties on Vanderheiden that back up to one ninety-six Ridge. Our concern is a light intrusion that will occur with the project, with the project as planned. The new owners of one ninety-six Ridge want to change the historic Victorian house into a six-bedroom apartment and separate second building, adding six three-bedroom townhomes, for a total of twelve units plus twenty-nine parking spaces. While we'd love to see the owner restore this beautiful and historic home, we don't believe this lot, which sits partially along a one-way street, is able to satisfy, safely accommodate, the occupancy level and greater density that comes with the current plan. We're strongly opposed to the project if it includes the development of the second building in the lot with six townhomes and twenty-nine parking spaces. We believe the proposed project by Snyder's Drywall presents an overcrowding of the land and light pollution on neighboring properties. We believe the city's code calls for all districts and projects, including multifamily projects, to have reasonably uniformed illumination levels, and therefore we request the planning board impose restrictions on the developer of one ninety-six Ridge to minimize the undesirable side effects of excessive illumination, such as light trespass and light pollution, which create a nuisance for the neighbors. We ask that all stereo lights be designed and located in such a manner as to prevent objectionable light or glare from spilling across carving lines to all neighboring properties, including homes on Ridge, William, Vanderheiden, and other streets. We also ask that all lights installed on canopies with roof overhangs be recessed so that the wind covers are flush for the bottom surfaces of canopy or overhang, and that there will be no lights mounted on the sides or top of canopies or overhangs. In conclusion, we recognize that the City of Glens Falls, that as the City of Glens Falls grows and prosper, we need, the need for all types of housing is required. The rehabilitation piece of this project is a great way to move forward. We don't need to be thoughtful of impact while working to achieve this housing goal. To introduce this project as a design will create unnecessary lighting, increase traffic, noise, environmental and aesthetic issues, decrease quality of life, and a loss of property value. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ellen Van Oken. I live at eleven Vanderheiden. I've only been here a year. I'm a transplant from Florida, believe it or not, so I don't have any, like, historical stories about the area. I'm just learning, and I think it's pretty awesome, and meeting with the neighbors, the man telling all these things about the properties has just been pretty amazing. I want to piggyback on what John said about the lighting, because from my bedroom window, I see these beautiful trees that are that center property, which will become a parking lot. And I don't want to have, you know, lights shining in my window or cars, because, you know, the access road that's going to drive through the property is going to bring headlights, whether it's in the morning, whether it's in the evening, and, you know, I wake up for headlights. You know, also illuminating the property with porch lights and whatever lights that need to be, it's going to be way too much on that many pieces of properties, you know. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, if they are treating families and they bring children, where are these children going to play? You know, there is no place for them to play. It's a parking lot, and then there's the street. And as other neighbors have said, it's not a safe place for kids to play in the street. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Van Oken. I live at eleven Vanderheiden. I've only been here a year. I'm a transplant from Florida, believe it or not, so I don't have any, like, historical stories about the area. I'm just learning, and I think it's pretty awesome, and meeting with the neighbors, the man telling all these things about the properties has just been pretty amazing. I want to piggyback on what John said about the lighting, because from my bedroom window, I see these beautiful trees that are that center property, which will become a parking lot. And I don't want to have, you know, lights shining in my window or cars, because, you know, the access road that's going to drive through the property is going to bring headlights, whether it's in the morning, whether it's in the evening, and, you know, I wake up for headlights. You know, also illuminating the property with porch lights and whatever lights that need to be, it's going to be way too much on that many pieces of properties, you know. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, if they are treating families and they bring children, where are these children going to play? You know, there is no place for them to play. It's a parking lot, and then there's the street. And as other neighbors have said, it's not a safe place for kids to play in the street. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Tedesco. Today, as I lived at Fifty William Street for fifty-five years, Ray's Lot, Ken's Area, was very quiet, especially once the street became one-way. I don't live there anymore, but my heart's still there. These neighbors have really stepped up. They formed a coalition. They've got a logo, you've seen the logo. The traffic, everybody's probably feeling what you've said, but the point is, everybody here that lived in that house for twenty, thirty, forty years, single-family homes, everybody would be impacted by this tragedy. We have absolutely no objection to them developing and fixing up the house on the corner, putting apartments there on the corner. We're totally opposed, everything would be a fine line. It's a very bad lot. It needs a lot of restructuring, water, sewer. They talk about putting roads through, but they're just putting driveways. How are trucks, fire trucks, anybody going to get in there? They're going to have to build a road, a circular road from land, or from ridge, all around to the one-way. So... know, the access road that's going to drive through the property is going to bring headlights, whether it's in the morning, whether it's in the evening. And, you know, I wake up for headlights. You know, also illuminating the property with porch lights and whatever lights it needs to be, it's going to be way too much on that many pieces of properties, you know. So, the other thing I wanted to mention is, if they are treating families and they bring children, where are these children going to play? You know, there is no place for them to play. It's a parking lot, and then there's the street. And as other neighbors have said, it's not a safe place for kids to play in the street. So, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elton Despo. Today, since I lived at fifty Williams Street for fifty-five years, Ray's Lot, Kensington, very quiet, especially once the street became one-way. I don't live there anymore, but my heart's still there. These neighbors have really stepped up. They formed a coalition. They've got a logo, if you've seen the logo. The traffic, everybody's probably feeling what you said, but the point is, everybody here that lived in that house for twenty, thirty, forty years, single-family homes, everybody would be impacted by this project. We have absolutely no objection to them developing and fixing up the house on the corner, putting apartments there on the corner. We're totally opposed to everything to be a problem. It's a very bad lot. It needs a lot of restructuring, water, sewer. They talk about putting roads through it, but they're just putting driveways. How are trucks, fire trucks, anybody going to get in there? They're going to have to build a road, a circular road, from land, from Ridge, all around to the one-way street to William. The traffic is going to be horrendous. Many people have done studies. We're going to demand studies, okay? I don't know if you brought up the fact that Ridge Street is, no, yeah, so we have to have extra traffic study. Everybody on that street has cushioning from trees, has kept the neighborhood quiet. It's a green space. It's like this green space. So, those trees will have, not all the trees, they'll come out, beautiful standing trees between my house and the property, and that's going to create a lot of noise in the neighborhood. It's affecting people on both sides of that street. So, not just the eight houses, but twelve, and maybe more houses, almost twice as green as William, Vanderheiden, and other neighborhoods. We would love to see these guys fix up that house on the corner. It's a nice house, it's kind of derelict right now. I've seen over fifty-five years, I've seen that house in terrible, okay? If they want to fix it up and make it nicer, yes, and put it facing Ridge Street, all in favor of that. But we're not in favor of what's going to go to be mine. It's a bad lot, and I just think, going to watch and continue that, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Davis. I live at forty-eight Williams Street. While I don't directly abut 196 Ridge, I'm right next to Brittany, who's at fifty, and I see the trees and green space from my home. I've always looked at Glens Falls as, you have the city, and then you have all these neighborhoods: Jackson Heights, Kensington, across Sanford Street, which is, you know, gone now. But I feel like there's been a ton of housing being built in the area, which, don't get me wrong, is a very good thing, but I feel like the city is moving into the neighborhoods with the size of this project. Like others have said, we have no problem with the main building being fixed up. It's been in disrepair for years and years and years. I've been in my house twenty-nine times. But we strongly object to the six townhomes that have a huge impact on our lives and on our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Judy Caligero. I live at eleven Loughton Avenue. Been there for about forty years. I've also been the chair for the city of Glens Falls for eighteen years, and service, currently the chair of the Glens Falls IDA. I don't want to repeat what some of my neighbors have already said, so let me focus on a few other points, although I do agree with them that the extensive size of the proposed development varies greatly from the neighboring properties, and they're mostly one- and two-family residential homes. And while I support the idea of restoring this historic building, I'm not in favor of building a second building on this lot for six additional units, plus the twenty-nine parking spaces. I think a greatest concern, and it's already been raised here today, for me, is building an access road through that road that connects Ridge Road onto Williams Street, and the traffic that's going to be through there. I fully support the whole idea of doing a traffic impact study. I hope that the city of Glens Falls will do that, or that you'll require the developer to have a traffic impact study done. I think it needs to be done extensively, and Brittany already talked in detail about that, and I hope that you would cover all of those points. The property's close to working wells, including one that's within twenty-five feet of the property. I wonder if you, as a planning board, have any kind of restriction on development near working wells? And if you don't, what steps will you require Snyder's Drywall to protect these wells during both construction and operation? Also, the property, as you know, is within the watershed district. I'd like also to know what steps will be taken by Snyder's Drywall to protect the watershed, and will the city impose any restrictions on development for watershed protection, including stormwater runoff, pollution prevention strategies, protection of green space, and any kind of ecological restoration? Based on recent activity that I've witnessed and my neighbors have witnessed at 196 Ridge Street, it appears that Snyder's Drywall had been engaged in asbestos abatement, or remediation, or some closely related work. I would like to know the extent of the work, if proper safety protocols were followed, and can the city ensure that the owner complied with all federal and state regulations? Has the abatement or remediation work been completed? And did it involve containment or cleanup? And if it was remediation, has the risk been entirely removed off of the property? Those are a few of my main concerns. Be happy to answer the questions you would like. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kate Austin, and I live at one eighty-seven Ridge, so I'm close. And I'm involved in the community, and part of what I've been doing for the last fifteen years is trying to attract more people to Glens Falls to live here and enjoy this awesome community that we have. And so, it's wonderful to hear that that's working and that we need more housing. However, I do have concerns about the infrastructure that's in place in this neighborhood, and whether or not it can handle what is being proposed. Specifically, Jackson Heights, where my kids go, lost their art room this year, which I don't think everybody knows, due to over-enrollment. And so, I think we just need to pause and think about responsible and sustainable growth. And that's what I'd like to say today. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Bog. I'm a resident at two hundred Ridge Street. My husband Jeff Bog spoke earlier, and those are two little ones, causing recollection in the background, which I apologize for, however, you both wanted to be here. You've heard many of the concerns already listed this evening, so I'm not going to repeat all of that. However, I would like to kind of reiterate the real concern about the stormwater drainage due to the increase of impervious surface. I know that they do have some plans included, as far as a few dry wells, but is that really sufficient? I mean, I think that was discussed for the park in the area, but what about the rest of the property? Because that's going to be substantially increased in the amount of impervious surface, which is not existing currently. And I know that the city already has difficulty with stormwater drainage and pre-existing flooding issues. So, I think having a plan to really thoroughly investigate how much that impact is going to, or excuse me, how much that increase is going to impact the current stormwater system is really important, because that can lead to a lot of issues, moving forward for the city, but also for the residents that are right there, which I am fond of, because my house is like to move right out the side there, and that would be my backyard. In addition to that, I know somebody spoke a little bit about erosion, but as part of the green space and the stormwater drainage, I know somebody did mention the sweat plan, the stormwater pollution prevention, part of the, like, compliance with that, and then the MS four, which is like a federally mandated for the double-a watershed requirement, that has to be called as well, requires buffers, environmental buffers. And I know that they do have some plans to take down some of the trees that are not as healthy, and that's appreciated. However, what's the plan for that? We have to have environmental buffers added into the property, and then they have to be maintained over the year and throughout, like, throughout the year, but then over the years? So, is that something that you're going to plan to take care of, or is somebody going to be in charge of that? And then, the other concern I have is the garbage. I know that it is kind of silly to talk about, but we have squirrels that go into our garbage all the time, and I'm concerned with the location of a large bed being so close to the homes with the amount of garbage that's coming from that size and scope of a project. And then, when people move in, more of the, like, the edible type stuff, I think that's going to be an issue as well, because we have seen repercussions in the area. I think that's it. I really appreciate your time in letting us all speak, but I really do hope that we, as the city and the planning board, investigate this to the fullest extent, because there are definitely some environmental concerns that would impact all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. Members of the board, thanks for listening to our vote this evening. Carrie and Barb Schrader, live at two oh six Ridge Street. We also back up to the property in question. You've now heard many sincere concerns of our neighbors, and I want to remind you that you carry a legal, ethical, and moral obligation to seriously consider those concerns before rendering a decision. While the applicant may technically be conforming and checking off all the zoning boxes, that fact alone does not guarantee that this project is a good fit for this neighborhood, or that it will result in a positive outcome for the community at large. Your duty is to weigh the many repercussions that this project will produce, both today and into the future. Many other developers are watching this very closely, because this proposal will septuple the density of this project and this parcel. It's physically impossible to increase the density of one property seven times and not have a drastic effect on all those factors that have been mentioned tonight. And though it may be legal under the present zoning ordinance to develop and build a compound of this size, it's ethically not responsible. Such a development will detract from the value of the surrounding homes, upset the balance and beauty of the block, and fundamentally change the character of the community. While we applaud the applicant's desire to renovate and preserve the original historic mansion at 196, we oppose the addition of a second structure on this single parcel, especially the concept of building a strip of multiple townhomes and an ancillary parking lot. First and foremost, this project fundamentally violates the principle of zoning compatibility and neighborhood character. Our area is defined by its historic single-family homes, spacious lots, and a consistent low-density aesthetic that has been preserved for generations. The introduction of a high-density multi-unit townhouse complex is a radical departure from this established pattern. It creates a stark visual disharmony that will permanently erode the historic charm and residential integrity that make our neighborhood both unique and desirable. We're here to protect that very fabric of our community. This proposal is not merely a new development, it's an incompatible intrusion that threatens the character, safety, and history of our long-established eighteenth-century, single-family home neighborhood. I was going to draw, tell you about a number of studies that have been done that talk about when you take single-family homes and single-family neighborhoods and make them into residential, into rental complexes, and how it affects the value of the properties, but it also brings in a higher rate of crime, fear of the environment. Bottom line, please seriously consider our start.
Mr. Chairman, I have a letter, just wanted to be sure that the planning board received from Patrick and Donna Clark, who are neighbors there, and I can, I'd be happy to read it, if that's okay?
Sure.
Patrick and Donna Clark, two oh three Ridge Street. I just wanted to be sure you have that. Okay. Can I just speak with Bob Landry, who is unable to be here tonight, but I believe he expressed some of his concerns to the board or to certain members. Thank you.
Good evening. Can I just ask you, please?
Who's she?
This property is forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-two hundred and twenty square meters. And if you pursue it for a home, you could have had nineteen minutes.
Nineteen point seventeen minutes.
Instead, the developer's suggesting only twelve.
Correct.
And your green space is more than fifty percent.
Correct.
And our code specifically encourages, under the RM, multi-family residential districts, this is just for the board, and she had a book that the code, it specifically says, "The general purpose and intent of this residential zoning district is to provide from one to a multi-family dwellings within the city of Glens Falls, and where the conversion of residential structures beyond one or two-family category is permitted and encouraged." It is the intent of this district is to permit multi-family dwellings in areas which are able to accommodate a greater density. So, our code specifically promotes this type of project in the RM. I just want to make sure the board aware of that.
Obviously, a lot of promotion, obviously, a lot of items that were brought together by the neighbors. The Snyder's obviously have spent a great deal of time in our office, spent a great deal of time looking at some of the code, but also the building itself. Some of the questions that were asked, the biggest one that jumped to my mind was the asbestos report. Asbestos report, copies of it have been given to the city building department. They were made aware of the asbestos abatement that was taking place. The building has been one-hundred percent cleared. We do have the cleared report on that, so all the asbestos has been removed from the property. None of it remains, none of it has been encapsulated. There's nothing that's left there.
And that was done through the city building department?
Correct. It was part of the interior demolition.
Correct.
Traffic was discussed. Anything under a hundred trips a day is considered under impact by all traffic studies. We've done several of them, not necessarily for this project, but we've done several traffic studies in the past. It's been mentioned many times, there are twenty-nine parking spaces, which are twenty-three parking spaces.
Twenty-three parking spaces.
We eliminated several of them. We provided more than what we required. We backed that off, as was requested of this board before. The drainage does have to be contained on our site, where we provide a drainage report. We did test pits. The information is located on the drawings. The CS that are on that site are well-drained. We did not hit any groundwater whatsoever. We dug it to over nine feet in a couple places. We didn't hit, we hit one rock. Didn't find a one rock, but there was a whole lot of them. The permanent pavement that's in front of the townhouses absorbs water, that's what you need to do. There's a bed of stones underneath that pavement, it was eighteen to twenty-four inches deep. That's the reserve that has to be for that stormwater. Dry wells and catch basins are meant to pick up the water, whether it runs into those catch basins, the dry wells permeate the water in the soil, that's what they're meant to do. These plans were provided to the city engineer. These plans were provided to the city engineer, I don't know if you had any comments that came back from them. We know it was provided to the fire department, where both did give us some feedback. We addressed the feedback that he gave us, otherwise I wouldn't even send that comment on the table. Not very good.
There's four drywalls, is that correct?
Correct. And then we paid for the shovel.
Yeah. Plus the permeable, hey man?
Yeah, there's, yeah, this, this area back here, where the parking lot is, the catch basin is a level. The state agency does not allow stormwater to go directly into a drywall, it's a segmentation issue. When sand and stuff gets spread on the driveways, you have to capture that sand before it goes into the drywall. All of our drywalls have a catch basin in front of them, which is what's required, where catch basins have something, it's a settlement to filter out, and it's a maintenance issue. That's what they did in terror, the neighbors have to take care of that, it's in maintenance Sewer connections, all buildings are connected to the sewer, or this building will be connected to the sewer. This line up here, we had somebody on site with a snake to make sure that it is open because the building has been unoccupied for so long. They have been through that. We, we know we have to look at the connection for this building because we have to connect the new building into this building and this new townhouse building will connect right there, that'll lead to it. Again, these plans have been applied to the city engineer, they're aware of it, they're working with the water and the sewer. Both buildings are being upgraded, new water systems, because both buildings have been fully sprayed for, because of what they are, and the spray was in there now. So for fire protection, both buildings are closed.
Is that just a bed?
No, that was a main out, that was the place, it's got a cat. That's the thing, it's just that right down there.
Yeah, so.
As far as the vegetation, yes, some of the big trees are coming out, some of the bollard trees suck along that are split, not halfway up, and they're in danger of coming down and back to mend them, we're gonna get it tonight and tomorrow, depending approximately when they're, if they don't come out. We are filling in, where we're taking trees out along this property line, we're filling back in with coniferous trees that are gonna happen in the meantime, around rural area, rural area, and there is a six-foot buffer fence. The building sits back far enough and what's required by that, we did that, we moved the building away from it so that there's more trees continuing to go into the front. This area back here is, is that open? None of these trees that are on the perimeter are being touched, there is one that is in the building that has come down, obviously, it's in the middle of the lot. There's also one tree that's laying on the ground out there, we found it, remember, out there, they gave it up. Lighting, lighting was brought up several times, all of our lighting is dark sky compliant, it's all down cats pictures. The lighting for this parking lot back here is bollard lights, they're not full mounted lights, they're bollard lights, down low, it's going to the parking structure, the parking lot that was done for it, some headwaters, and we're here on Broad Street, we're laying out very dull lighting. It's just meant to lighten the ground. It will be, those bollards will be lower than the six-foot fence.
So you're gonna have a six-foot fence?
We did, yeah, six-foot solid, it's a fence, yeah, to prevent any lights, people coming in and out. We're gonna be doing that. Otherwise, I think, I think we've addressed all the questions, but this area we brought up.
Someplace for kids.
So this area back here, while it is completely enclosed, and we have taken away a lot of this parking area, this way to back here is going to be a playground or something, things like that in that, in that pool area. That's the perfect spot, but it is enclosed, it's enclosed by tents, it's made it out, and there's some jewelry property, which we can use.
Did somebody mention working in property, did you see property?
That, that.
I mean, I don't know that the other owners were tying in.
We were tying, both of ours were tied into water, game sewer, and they're well away with their, store floor is well away with the park.
Yeah, what was still well?
I, I haven't, certainly there's some, there's some of the jewelry properties that have active wells.
Do you need to call a general medicine, that working wells within 20 minutes?
25.
25. From what?
From parking lot.
But your building is also having one on the other feet.
And you're not, there's no security?
Right, there's no on-site, there's no on-site security.
And a lot of concern about traffic. As far as entrances and exits, William and Andre, I mean, I don't know if it would work, but would it, would it have to have a main and one way out?
In here and out.
I would say in bridge and then out one, because then you avoid so much traffic down one, because who's gonna want to go left on the ridge and the left off the ridge? Just, I'm drawing it out there, just from a traffic perspective, because then you're only coming on fully on your one, so you're only obviously coming on.
You have me opposed to that way?
No, but if people.
It's a, it's, it's what's considered an unlawful action. We can certainly put signs up that says, "Entrance only, come in here."
Well, I mean, if it's worth of safety action, it might not be as much, but depending on, but that's more so if it's like no left turn or something. So, I mean, if you put like no left turn, I'm not saying that this is bad, I'm just saying, I know there's a lot of traffic concerns, but it might avoid people going by, William would have had, you took the left on the ridge and then the left to get in, it just might need them to go elsewhere, to take a right into the traffic.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Can I just dovetail some of the things we had to leave here? You're not having your roof disneyed. Board members, we have a big, we're very nice, so let's make sure that everybody can hear us. I have a question for the board members, and questions that some of you didn't answer. Some of these, they got to make, it's kind of crazy, so I was, and again, I apologize for not having your roof, I think you do. Just, just starting out, you mentioned something about in the back end of the lot, and it kind of looks like there's kind of a front line, tree line type of thing, there's gonna be a fence around the back part. But you mentioned something about once, the existing trees are gonna stay? Correct. This is our, 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 all the trees that belong to the property are in good shape, they have properly done, they've done the, if they're doing one, here is this to come down, here's here. These are, these are, these are, you mind, and we're not, well, that's a, that's a, that's I have no position to, to make a judgment, but you mentioned, you mentioned along the, I guess I'll call it the lower, the day of heritage, these are property, there's a few trees down beside their lot, and across the back. I think that type of restrictions have some, some of the other neighbors, for these, there's trees along there like that, that the, there's five other properties that, they're not gonna be getting new trees in, when you're mentioning how, maybe some of the existing trees.
All preferences.
Okay, so all these existing trees are gonna stay.
And fence, and fence against others.
Okay.
On our property.
I have a look at it, and then you can change, some of it, and then we can, and this may have six foot fence.
Five.
Yeah, so anything, anything that is shady.
Yeah.
Is scheduled for now.
Okay.
That's on, that's on the, we're moving.
No, that's your, that part.
Oh, yeah, that, that area, there's, there's three that are ready on the corner, one that's, that's here. And with the, all the, because they're weird, they're criminal trees, they're stapled along here, these are all, this is a cedar head, or a cedar stand that's in here, most of the cedar trees are here, they're good, they're trees, they're, 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 they're good. Um, yeah, along here, they're, 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 they're as well. So, 20, 25 orange trees and then a bunch of shrubs. See that, you know, you're talking about stringy, that, that side, you know, the trees?
Yes, there's all, all, every name is in there.
Are there any standard practices as far as, you know, you got a six-foot fence, you put in a six, is there, is there a, you know, same thing, a tree, does it have a tree?
Yeah, we, we noted the size, and this had came from Martin, or our first, and we recommend trees that are well in those soils.
It's on C dash two.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, 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 we, 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 so two to three, two-inch caliber, that's a two-inch caliber, that's a rest plate on there, that's how big a stalk a tree is above there.
I think the term is almost a caliber, the diameter of a tree is about three.
Well, that, that's, that judging is how big it is, that's, that's their terminology, a two-and-a-half inch caliber, two-and-a-half inch diameter of a tree, that's a study above there, which that gives you an idea of how big that tree is gonna, is gonna be moved to plant. You know, these aren't, we're not talking about putting in sap, we're talking about a tree that's big root ball, is, is probably maybe a 20 by 20, 20 by 20 tall, it's going to be.
I think, I think the other thing, I mean, these people are not looking for a solar field in 20 years from now, they have organic practice, they're on, they're, 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 you mentioned the paddies were located back in the, I guess we call it, I don't know, so that's kind of what made it, that's moved up, the trees along the whole, it's not, right, you were gonna move any of the trees in that back parking area?
Yes.
Is there any limit for this parking, for the lease, if these people could have? Is that part of your lease requirement? I mean, could I, could I move any of your three better townhouses and six power reserves?
We think that, you got something about, 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 right, yes.
Well, I guess the reason why I ask is, is that, that parking area, that, you know, I would assume it would be used for, you know, smoke storage, it says back future parking expansion, it's necessary.
That was part of the original, I think it's out.
So, but the fact that it's leaning down is this way, then this is an area that's possible for future parking?
Yes.
Yes. If, if it's required, which again, you know, they're looking at the leases now, and they can set up the lease and say, they can have only two cars.
What would they make if they had more cars?
If they found that they had more, more cars there than, than they could. But again, you, you take those away, we met one and a half, one and a half spaces per parking lot.
All right, what happens if you speed, you move our parking, you're gonna put this on? Well, there's still room.
There should be a, there should be a door spot, you still have room.
Yeah. If you add, it looks like scale of that, if you add a six.
Yeah, there's still room in front of the space, I mean, those spaces don't get, there's a 10-foot section from the, from the property line to where we're building, and we're well inside that section, so we're at least 15 feet from the property line, any of the parking, you know, 15 feet from here to that door, like a pile of 500.
Well, I guess my concern when I first read this was, the, in essence, the six or eight parks, perhaps what you get, is to say, oh, we can all do the back.
Yeah, there are back spaces.
It just seemed bad.
The intent is to not, you know, we, we have no reason to go.
You mean the full, the plan that you have written?
100.
I think you have five extra spaces.
And you said we could go to, if you did expand that parking?
We'd be excessive.
You'd be excessive, code, 1.5 spaces per unit, it's well.
And that would affect the 50% of, okay, so all that would, um, you use the term that the utility HVAC is likely to be on the back. I just, I would like to know, the weather is gonna be on the back.
Yes.
For the front or the open?
For the front, for the, well, the townhouse.
Townhouse, side.
We have two fronts, so.
Okay.
All right, so it's gonna be closed in the back, and, and outside.
Of course, it's, of course, that's, that's, of course.
Was it, where, I mean, it's gonna be, you say that it will be, it's gonna be a lot of pressure for each apartment?
They're likely to be one inch, or two, there's, there's size, so they can handle two.
I know another concern that the service expressed to me was, how visible that, when I, I recorded the debt, that property was like across 45 feet from Ridge Street to the back. And some of the concern is, is this existing front building, with the addition, are you gonna, how much of that back lane are you gonna save? Is it?
Front, front ridge?
Yeah.
The ridge, actually. It is, the building itself, the proposed townhouse building, is shorter than the building up front.
Right.
And because it sits lower, front Ridge Street, you might, as you drive through, as you drive, you're, you got 34 sixes, nine on the back.
Yep. I mean, there's no records, so it is gonna be completely covered?
Partially.
All right, so, so part of this, um, all right, um, the, not talking, you mentioned about traffic, you mentioned 100 trips a day, is that a state, no, I mean, what?
Within, within the city, within, by the city.
Okay, so there's no, yeah, 100 trips a day, what, what's that?
That's, that's trips by residents of this, in order.
And that's considered mine?
Yes.
Where that, by, by, by traffic study? Where does that, does it come from?
It's usually done by a traffic study, we, like I said, we've done, we did not do one for this, we have plenty of several other ones.
Is there some portfolio, like?
Yes.
Just, you know, all the parks we have going in?
It's in DOT.
DOT codes, X number of, X, or, 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 or.
Correct.
So does that meet this? You got 23 parks, so you got 23 parks.
Correct.
You got hundreds of, so that means?
Four, each park is, how many you going, four times?
And that's in 24 hours. So, so there's, there's no required, right? There was a concern about light pollution, it's still, you mentioned that there's, the bollards stop out in the back area, I didn't see it being, that, that, there's no light, no overall light on hand, or is it?
It's, it's all, it's all, it's, so, each, each one, each one of the parks has a recessed entry, and that will have a recessed light underneath it.
So, 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 um, all right.
There's, all four of the building, all four of the apartments in this building have separate entrances, all four of them have canopies over the top of them, and they're all recessed. Two units that were added there have a front entry and a rear entry, again, all.
A lot of things that we've been able to express here. The one thing, driving out of the street, spending time there, and really looking at this project. The one thing I'd really like to change for me, the end of the condo building or the tax living building, to make it sound better, I guess, I would really like to see that as a house. I think that would change the look of the street. Most of the building is hit from Ridge Street. You're gonna have a bunch of trees that are gonna grow. And if it is approved or whatever happens on the road, I can see that being somewhat almost non-existent. I would like to hear of the traffic study with all the apartments that are being built all over the state and other areas right now. I'm sure there's numbers that can say that now there's traffic patterns. I did ask some issues, some persons could be there. Firemen is there in order to fire on the protest to make sure there is enough water. I wanted my own research to find out about the school issue. I was just recently asked by a representative from the city school district when all these new apartments are coming online, that are already approved because of the issue of schools are getting routed. So that's something that needs to be answered. And there, the play space, we could see something factored in on that and take care of lighting pollution for the whole park. There isn't any of that. They used to use, they were really well-designed, but doesn't fit the character here.
Are you asking for more information?
I would, yeah.
You're not going to go down to the app or get more information than you're looking there? They're looking off of the security codes for taking the home.
Materials, you said brick around the ends and stuff. And then the site floor, you can do any questions on the call.
I was wondering if there was some, I was trying to get three examples of how science samples are used in the project. Yeah, I always wondered if, and this was a comment I made very first time, this one section of the street, you've got an apple here, and I think it's a beach. That would, despite regenerating the massage, it looks more residential. How soon?
Position around.
Really focusing on the idea of, you know, that is back there, planting that up, so maybe nobody knows it's back there.
Well, again, we're running the privates all the way down.
Privates low, yeah. So just to, just to, you know.
Do additional, do additional foundations and things like that.
Well, yes, I have the privacy for, privacy, yes, yes.
Well, we're back on William Street.
Just, right, right.
So we have a few things. The.
Science sample, brick sample, maybe we work the end of the one elevation, or we'll find out, you know, but.
You did a great job in the other building, making that addition, and then you have that look, and then the traffic study.
That's the biggest question.
And then, you know, I was like, when you were over there, being over there today at 10:00 in the morning, this 17th unit building across the street, there's more car rolling down. You know, they have 12 apartments across the road, 21 units. So, but we need questions, and I assume there's a lot of concern and reason that people represent.
I think it's kind of a bad idea, it's a close enough picture. It's very close to a, I'm not gonna call it a major intersection, but bigger.
It's a major.
I think that kind of, you know.
We can do these, because you don't get that.
They're coming in. You know, without being as close, we actually have, the fact that we have a traffic problem on its own, so every apartment that comes in and out, to me, kind of a session for reading some of the parts. Because, you know, I've lived here my whole life, and we had people, for some reason, reporting in on its own, and it's been a long time.
Well, and how to initiate and, and why do you start on that? So I think having a good evidence is a nice change.
It is, it's on us.
It's a good response for your board, and others. That, that's what's interesting is, I'm sorry, the comments say, there are too many one bedroomed ones, and we have an advocate that brings in two bedrooms, and there's opposition to that, so. But you know what the board is looking for?
Yes.
And there's a quick question. There's a quick, to, you know, I'm kind of getting involved in part of the state. How does a traffic study work? Because it was a traffic study done by Hawkins, and then this team bad, and they feared that that was slamming. I, I said, no, I compared, the fact that they did it was, you know, they ended with the bad man independent traffic study. Independent, how does a non-biased independent traffic study work?
Traffic study, what traffic study has to be done by a certified traffic engineer.
Okay.
So they, you know, they're.
Certified, they're not going to make up the numbers, so that's why one happens.
It's the same, it's the same.
Putting a certification on.
And that traffic study they did for Hawkins, which we have a lot of people commenting on, border borders around the force, and it's been here.
The number.
Same team, we did it with Stewards.
Same traffic study, and then it's.
There was a traffic study that was done for the Stewards. The Stewards were in here on Lud Street and Washington or Sherman.
I'm just trying to.
And that, and that has proven, since that has happened, you know, it was set aside to maybe regularly interlaying only coming out of Sherman Avenue, which hasn't been materialized because the city hasn't done that. But the traffic has not been.
No, this will be on every day.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Rachel, I think I'm going to say.
Second, all favor, a question.
I'm Devin Rozell, zoning planning coordinator for the city. I just want to let the public that was here know, this project will not be noticed again. It is your obligation to follow it for when it will appear on the agenda again. We have no requirement from the state to further, further notice any applicants in certain. I'm sorry, for those who couldn't hear that, there is no mandate from the state for us to continue to send mailers or notice this. You'll have to follow the agendas as they come out to know when this will be appearing again in front of the board.
Next item on our agenda is a site review, Site Plan, U.S.P. 25-000-04, Flomatic Corporation Orders of Tax Map Number 309416, Dash 23-1. Conley Knows 15, Prines Island, represented by Ethan Hawes, seeking second interview to expand their existing facility by 50,413 square feet, and gross storage and manufacturing and additional office space pursuant to City of London Zone Chapter 220-21B, District Required. Excuse me, get, get the conversations outside, please. Architecture Review, AR25-005, Flomatic Corporation, Orders of Tax Map Number 309416-23-1. Conley Knows 15, Prines Island, represented by Ethan Hawes, seeking architecture review to expand their existing facility by 50,413 feet, and emergency storage, manufacturing, and additional office space pursuant to Facility of Ludswall, Zoning Code Chapter 220-21B, District Required, Architecture Review, again, move.
The day before you're ready to leave the hall, it's 16:00, our picture. With me tonight, Nick Barr from the, from Flomatic. We have submitted to.
Excuse me!
Not a problem, thank you. So we've submitted to this board, we were here for sketch plan review a few months ago. We've submitted to this board the final site plans, which were developed by the Environmental Design Partnership. That was really the crux of our, what we needed when we were here last time, obviously. The building, nothing's really changed with the building. We've just more clearly defined everything that's going on with the site. If, just Jacob, sorry, Jacob Furchane from EDP is here tonight if there are any specific questions on the site. It's, it's a very extensive site plan that was done by them. They've been through all the stormwater management, they've dug all the test holes, and done all the infiltration testing. We have gone as far as doing geotechnical information testing for the building expansion itself. We're expecting that report to come back anytime within the next couple of weeks, so we know what's going on there. Nothing really has changed from when we showed you this project a few months ago, so if there are any specific questions, I will take those.
Would anyone from the public like to comment on this?
I just had a quick thinking. The fact that this is situated between the future of the neighborhood, and I don't know if that's necessarily weapons or not, because I think it's possible.
There's no, but it's heard on the side, there are no weapons, no pistol weapons, but the canal is behind it, and.
No, I just didn't know, from past experience, I had to get that, because there are arms for everything, and all that.
Yeah, nothing, nothing that works. Something that never causes you to change is that you're, what was there?
Okay, so I have one on the site, I think it's a great place for a site, but it's under use only, I'm just saying that. It was down there, yeah, and I was sort of thinking, things like that, I think we should do that.
My guy, we put the elevation out in 2012. The building is gonna match, the building right now. So we did the, the way 2012, so we matched the building, so that, um, put together at different times, but we fell, fell as sales, since I became president, in 2020, and we need more manufacturing facility.
That's right.
We had jobs, so, and, um, the 1014 was pretty much a job, it was pretty, and that was very smooth, so basically focused space, we had manufacturing space, and we had workers hiring, you know. We had 121, we have 121 apartment spaces, so it was, that would max out our capacity that, on 15, and, you know, there's some building that they were there, so we wanted to, you know, bring jobs to Ludswall.
I mean, unless I just need to put out there, I think, improve, yeah, and, you guys, I think, we usually wish, you guys represent, I think, they're, Ludswall's needs as far as the, 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 successful. So, let me say, I agree, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Scher? I was like, you're doing too much, I think.
Very, very.
Simply, you go through those. Yeah, I only, I only question, I know, certainly, you probably have, not really issue, but if there's anything, has, here those were the, 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 or is it, 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 or Will the proposed action result in increased potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create an hazard to the environmental resources or even health? No. Based upon the answer to part two, the board would issue a negative declaration. I'd like to make a motion with the Lenzwall Planning Board acting as the board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Owners of the Tax Map number 30320-17. As presented at the meeting of the Department of Architecture and Design. The action should be taken on the front of the action. And issued in a negative declaration.
All favor.
I'd like to make a motion with Lenzwall Planning Board acting as the board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Who has the project to provide its fundamental consideration. Commonly known as 17th Prime Design Drive. As presented at the meeting of the Department of Architecture and Design.
All favor. All favor. Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. New business. Site plan review, architectural review. Lawrence Cooper Street, Inc., owners of Tax Map number 30320-17. All business. Here, all business. Architecture review, ER 25, that's 001022, designed review. Representing Trustco Bank, owner of Tax Map number 3020-20. Commonly known as 37th Bay Street, are seeking to turn on all existing blue lights and lights on the entire area of the exterior. Pursuant to City of Bloodfall's zoning code, chapter 220-17D, this required architectural review approval. Anyone here represent us? Lawrence Cooper. Let next. We're not there yet. We did. You got one before that.
Governor Rosales, planning coordinator for the city. I just want to share with you, I do not believe that anyone is here for Trustco tonight. I just wanted to share that I reached out to the applicant after our prior meeting. They told me they would provide proposed dates for us to go do that site visit so that I could notice it to the public as we discussed. I never heard anything back after that email saying they would send proposed dates. Also was brought to the building and codes department attention this week that these lights that they are here trying to get approved to turn on have already been turned on for the past week. I just wanted to make sure that everyone had that information available to them. Thank you. It will be done this week. We... I was the only person in the building and codes office this morning, so... It is our intention to issue violations first thing in the morning.
Is the violation a general violation or is it like for every day?
I can't speak to what violation the code enforcement officer will issue.
I mean, they seem to... It just seems like they just totally didn't comply.
It was named last time that we're going to have a workshop, but they turn on the lights and walkways and hurdles to adjust your power. So that you can make a more efficient... What the code officer is telling everyone, so like planning coordinators tell them, is that they never provide you any dates. So you really can't act on this then. So you have a... You deny them for the no-show or you give them a courtesy and give them a long time.
And I would just like to express that there was no further contact from the applicant and there is no penalty or a time delay for which they can come back and apply for architectural review if they're denied. So they could come back at the... Well, not next meeting because they missed that deadline today, but they could reappear in January.
Yeah, we could show... I mean, as far as happening, it's like this, they just definitely won't solve.
Yeah. So then we may make a motion.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion with Lenzwall Planning Board acting as board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Who has the project identified as CZ design... Trustco Bank, commonly known as 37th Bay Street. There was no presentation of the meeting at the 11/5 that the applicant did not show up. Nor did they schedule a time for a full workshop as a great moment at previously.
You can turn the lights on without...
Additionally, they turned the lights on, lights impression on, without any... I'd like to make a motion to the other side.
I second the motion. All favor of denying this application? The end was true. New business. Now, with the site plan review, SB 25-0023, Lawrence Cooper, Inc., owners of Tax Map number 30320-17. 17-20, the number of... 13-90, owners 21 through 25, Cooper Street are seeking to construct a permanent pavilion replacing temporary canvas tents for events pursuant to City of Bloodfall's zoning code, chapter 220-21D, this required site plan review with approval. Architecture, ER 25-02, Lawrence Cooper Street, Inc., owners of Tax Map number 30320-17. 13-90, owners 21 through 25, Cooper Street are seeking to construct a permanent pavilion replacing temporary canvas tents used for events pursuant to City of Bloodfall's zoning code, chapter 220-21D, this required architectural review with approval. Good evening, gentlemen.
For your records, you can call control, this is architecture with the manager, going to talk on the road, Lawrence Cooper, Ellis. Um, so Eric.
Wait, this is only one?
This is one. I'm going. That's where I'm going.
Okay.
When this building was created, the old pavilion needed to go away.
The old star was parked.
Correct. The pavilion is... Eric is now the proud owner of what remains of that and it's all sitting over on his yard. Um, this is intended to mean purpose. Everything that was done, everything that was... It came from that building into several buildings around Morris and Curnan Street. Um, this is the first of them. We had to get several area variations. Um, this area variation was approved first. The other ones, we should go back to the zoning board with some additional questions. They have since approved all of the variations that we were looking for. We didn't have enough time to make the planning arrangements, yes, the planning work submissions. So this is the existing, um, shirt factory. This is the portion that gets at the main building. And currently... Currently, there's an existing canvas tent. So this is... This up here is Lawrence, this is Humbert, this is Curnan.
So this is all the way to the right, the shot goes to Chris.
Those are the Rock Hill House. Uh, there is the parking lot here and there is the... Currently, there is a canvas, a new frame. Probably, there is a temporary roof for food truck or house, some food things. The intention is to go... The intention is to build a building in basically the same spot with that canvas. It's going to extend into the bottom part of the canvas. One does. The variations that we created were beside that guy and for beside back for the current lane. Obviously, the light cuts between those. Satellites, areas, double...
Thank you very much.
Three... We have three fronts and rear on this property, so that was the necessity or a big of the... The building will be a whole structure. Where you lie, basically, this is going to be a small portion of the old apartment. Uh, all of the... All vertical posts will have to be replaced. Um, including most, all of the truss work that we need to use and we will... Basically, this is a... So across the... Very different... Very total, forty feet, thirty six feet.
Thirty six by thirty, forty is fine.
Yeah, that's the... So that's where we're at with this. And there are... There are other buildings.
Does this mean that we have more coming now?
We... We didn't...
I was at the zone, the first zoning area, that's the floor. I'll actually do that. Go back to... Let's open up the public comment. Would anyone from the community like to comment on this?
When this was first proposed, um, to the zoning board, they asked for the site plan with all the drivers, all the... So I'm not handling such a big thing. So that's on the... The coverage, that's on the Rock Hill. Uh, they don't probably, not this probably. This one, they weren't concerned, there's no concerns on this one, it was all modern and that. We provided them with an updated site plan, if those show that it'll happen back here.
Is it going outside or is it just in there?
This is going outside.
Is it a twisted drive or...
Yeah, they don't have this.
Here.
Yeah. But for this, it's this one. There was no...
Well, the thing about it is, this encompasses all really was this thing. I know it's...
They're all individual projects.
In which way do you... This is... This way.
It does not come from... It pitches off to the north end of the side. And yes, we will be back to see you today as the deadline and attorney goes in, so it's probably going to be signed with permission.
Mr. Andrew.
Oh. Yes, it wasn't... I realized that if you put this up, it would become a local hometown. You're preserving the park. To me, I don't think it would fly. Everybody had a problem with you. He asked me if this is coming, he asked me if you had a lot of dollars and things like that. This is going to be a great day down in that area. And that is just... You know, replacing that person. Makes it all...
It's just getting all...
Yeah.
Mr. Sherrill? Hey, let me question that. Just being sidewalk.
Uh, sidewalk, relative to five. Yeah, relative to five, there is three street here. What's that? Jay's... Oh, no, sorry. Oh, recycling.
Yeah. Now, you can... It's hard to stop.
No.
It was a slight...
Yeah.
It's... But the...
Yeah, I know. So we use this as a small store. We say we have a year, so we all watch small store.
Yeah, we're in... Yeah, we're in... It's like a... Part, part of it. It's like a...
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah. It looks like a brick post. It's a six... No, I don't have too many. I have a little place on, um, of those regular things I'm starting. There's nothing to slide, not slide. Listen up, listen up.
Hi. Mr. Reed?
I'm good. Did you mention more apartments or something else?
So this building is going to be a big project. I just happened to be in the zoning board. Board of Works.
So on the Rock Hill Bay House property, uh, there is a covered stage. There's a stage that's there now that's a temporary. There's a covered stage, part of the building is being, part of the old building is being used with that. There's a covered building over there that's the same as this one, it's a canvas cover. Uh, again, we're going to reuse some additional pieces for the building. Other one is identical to this one from the Rock Hill Bay House property. And over behind Lenzwall's Produce, where all the trucks are stored now, is a maintenance building. Uh, for me to get all of those maintenance equipment inside the building and not be outside of it. And then there is a bathroom toilet facility that's going to be on the road, on the access...
Kind of spacey.
Yeah. So there's an access way that goes to the current lane, goes down to 100, next to the bike trail. This is not part of the bike trail, it's part of the rail bed though. And, uh, right about there, showing the light there, there's a parking space considered here on the front lane. Right behind me, they have a proposing toilet facility, permanent toilet facility, so when they have... They don't have to have a four by...
What are you doing with the tower? The Watchman's Tower?
Uh, nothing more right now. Because I want to pick up the stairs back up. The codes are all excited about having some state of the arts or stairs or... So I'm saying... As I said, there's rules. I know, so I'm just... I'm kind of doing pretty well. It's, uh, you know, we renovated, you know, we restored the windows and windows. It's been a last whatever, um, years here. And it's literally, uh, it's told by the postal business vice president of the age, it's the last side of it. That is the last known existence in the state of... On the NH trail, I can say. The last of the last. So...
He used to be everywhere.
He used to be a one armed guy and he's going to sit there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the woods goes. Right in there.
They took all the people that had been around the world. Been stuck in those jobs. I've never heard this here before in my life.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't... It's not affecting anybody. It's making the life easier, recycling. Um, it's a positive thing for our community. Um, I don't... There's no feedback on the community, I have no issue with it.
I think it's great. Great. Use...
I'd like to make a motion with the Lenzwall Planning Board acting as board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Who has the project identified as a type two action as a constructional expansion of an accessory non-residential structure involving less than 4,000 square feet. Therefore, no further action is required.
Glad to see some things don't change.
I would like to make a motion with the Lenzwall Planning Board acting as the board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review.
Second. All favor.
Thank you very much. Longest time guys.
Are you not? Site plan review, SB 25-0022, owner of Tax Map number 309.216-14-1. Commonly known as 11th Faxon Street. Is seeking to continue the operation of unhosed and short-term rental unit located in an R1D residence zone district, being the sunset clause pursuant to the City of Bloodfall's zoning code, chapter 220-30A, 8135, this is required site plan review with approval. ER 11th Faxon Street, 11th Faxon Street. Seeking approval to the sunset clause.
Really, I don't think we have. I was gonna try and do that. I was actually gonna try and do that. And I actually did it. Some of the poles.
Tosta. Any issues?
Yeah, we've been running it for a few years now, we haven't had any problems. Information about the same we had was smoke alarm went off and we had a fire. Neighbor called, it was a big fire. Typically, we detect, probably, if you had to have a taffy there, six months out of the year. Most of the time, it's vacant or reused. Uh, we don't live in it, it's, you know, we're not there. Uh, but we're within a half an hour away, so anything happens. We got really good neighbors, honest. They call me if there's a problem.
So you have a...
Yeah, we have good... All neighbors have numbers.
Okay. Would anyone from the community like to add that on this?
Was this my friend?
Yes, it's my friend. Was my friend.
Mr. Reed?
Good. No, we've got good relations with your neighbor.
That's... Mr. Andrew? Nice end.
Wait, do you have a question?
No question.
No, she says no, the background.
Yeah, we screen our guests at 3 o'clock. We don't let guests stay with you or do Airbnb users or something like that. We're not absentee hosts. We have a little, a few other short-term owners too, so we got good practice.
With respect to secret, are classified as a type two action, therefore no further action is required.
Uh, can I have a question? Is there like, is it three years from today or is it...
Three years from the end of the law.
It's a little. So, alright.
I believe it's February, if you called me in the morning.
Yeah, because I rent a year of this. So I don't want to... It's not February.
Sunset was three years from the law. I would like to make a motion with the Lenzwall Planning Board acting as the board of architectural review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Who have the project identified as Lily Pants, owner of the Tax Map, owner of 11th Faxon Street, to be an unhosed and short-term rental until the sunset clause expires. Um, and approval as presented at the meeting of the Board of Design.
Second. All favor. Hi.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Site plan review, Andrew, that house is a... Of Tax Map number 3020-17, owner of 11th Bay Street. Is seeking the site plan review over the whole site.
Okay. Alright. Typically, uh...
220-16, we want to discuss the word site plan.
I mean, I could take it from ten to three. Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. I will.
Trying to see something in the Russian voice going over that door.
I can't wait to get in that one.
It's a wonder they are...
So... So how do I see somebody?
Mr. Reed, you actually... You got that stuff?
Are you only... I'm only a month right now. Yes.
Thank you.
No, I'm afraid of that. I try by the... I agree with you. And it's great to see a shop... And hear you moving from one street to the other.
Just speaking. Just speaking to... No, I think it's great. I think it's good story. I think so. I think this is what they do this phase. I think that's why you want some more. No, I think it's all good.
No question. Mr. Andrew?
No, I'm like that. I'm glad to say that. I mean, you know, I can't think of one for coming into my school. I can't imagine that at all. And, you know, do the work, did it great. It's a great building and I think a lot of people... A bunch of...
Can you say to me?
I have to see something on that.
With respect to secret, are classified as a type two action, therefore no further action is required. I'd like to make a motion with the Lenzwall Planning Board acting as the board of site plan review here by the Board of Architectural Review. Who have the project identified as Lily Pants at the location of 113 Great Street, as presented at the meeting of the Board of Design.
Thank you.
All favor. Hi.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Alright. Site plan review, SB 25-0024, Alicia. Stosey, best seat of Tax Map number 309.28-1-12. Commonly known as 45 South Street, seeking the site plan review over the doghouse salon, a pet retail boutique, pursuant to City of Bloodfall's zoning code, chapter 220-19C. Seeking three, this report, site plan review with approval. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Alicia. I'm the Lisi of the 45 South Street, their next door neighbors here, looking... Yep, next door, looking to open up downtown dog spa and boutique.
I'd like to see a security guard from that... Owners of the Building. I'm here to support with me. Looks like we're sending that new day, we'll say it's been a long wait. Building, got a lot of... Mr. Reed, can you... Uh, perhaps, uh, a related potential, a few of them presenting. Mr. Reed, do you have any, perhaps a related, a few of the presenting, will you lock pets and stuff that's going in there?
Outside of this review? Yes.
I just, I always, I got work, it exploded and everything wasn't right. And it seemed like a parking lot, things coming back to within a block where you live, you know, grocery stores, something like that, stuff, and things like this. If we get apartments full of people, food dogs that need grooming, it's like, it just, the juxtaposition to the development is kind of, that's supposed to be a cool part, I said, and we start suffering, losing it to the babies, and it's necessary.
Now, we've got a very complimentary, reduced, the new construction, the renovation, so kept the boxes for.
Great idea.
You know, the other thing that I, I like with basically just, one thing that really struck me as you're not like just a retail store, you're not on this call, like you're sort of, you're supporting a guy that's there to escape, and then, you know, services to the community, you're, 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 you're supporting, so, like I said, I, I think it sounded like there was a lot of, just. So, as being a person of category, you, you're not going to be a little over maddened with it? So it's just people breaking in, you know, a lot of the records, and I spent a few hours. I, 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 my, um, I would have had, again, another very kind of thing to do here downtown. Well. Really, it was something mixed, I don't know if I would have really thought that, so.
With respect to seeker, I would classify this as a type two action, therefore no further action is required. Okay, that's enough, so we did it out. I would like to make a motion of the Bloodsfall planning board acting as the board of the site plan, being here by the head of site plan, approved of the project identified as a repair package at the location of Level 13, Great Street, as presented at the beginning of November of 2025.
Second, all favor? Good luck.